I think YouTube's gonna work. You must have changed it at some point. Cause it has Make-A-Bib TV floor. But it's makeambibtv@gmail.com.
Yeah, because it required me to put a last name in there. I tried to get... What's it? Youtube.com/what?
Alright, we are live on YouTube right now. It's just me, though. Go to youtube.com.
Testing one, two. Can you hear me anything?
I just went...
You can hear me?
Yes. So you're good. You can just stay as you are. Chris, what are you saying?
Where, where, where is this?
It is the Make-A-Bib TV account, which is...
Youtube.com?
I think slash Make-A-Bib TV. Alright, go to the search bar and type in Make-A-Bib TV, one word, space, floor.
Nope, I go into videos.
Click on the whoever published the video should have our seal.
Those pop ones up here are used videos.
I'll send you a link. What's the best way for me to send you this link? Uh, from a computer. Here, how about chat and Zoom? You're not in the Zoom anymore, though.
Testing, testing, testing.
We'll get back to wrestling.
No, 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 no. Do what you gotta do, no.
I'm really glad I enabled the YouTube thing as a backup. Do you remember earlier I told you that I don't record the meetings? And I probably should. This is the day when I'm gonna need to record the meeting.
Wow.
To YouTube? Well, just in case, I've never done it to YouTube before. Alright, here is the link. Your email. Huh.
Hi Sarah.
I'm unmuting. I unmuted YouTube, Dan, so we can converse. We are doing an audio test on YouTube. Audio testing. Test, test, test. Words.
Testing, testing, testing. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out how to change the name of the meeting room. It's probably lagging. I don't know how to change the name of the meeting. It just says Rachel Gamble's personal meeting room. We've got Commissioner-elect Howell coming on now. Can you hear me okay, Ms. Howell?
I can.
Excellent. Well, you should know that you get a gold star, because you logged on before all the commissioners.
Oh, well, good.
So you're on the right track.
Well, wait till you see what I'm fixing to do here. If I can make it work.
Yeah. Oh, that's... Yes, I'm in the web portal.
This, Commissioner Lucas had so much to say about me not smiling. I just have this up here for...
I think that's great. Zoom rooms and devices. Guys, I'm gonna mute us all for a second.
Okay, I'm gonna go get my books. I feel safe.
Is your headphones plugged in? Where can I hear us right now? Oh, it's his, okay. Oh, it's Janice's, alright. Uh, Mr. Howell, will you unmute for a second?
Hello?
Okay, were you able to figure out how to set your, um, profile picture? Is that what you were trying to do?
That's what I was trying to do now.
Alright, if you look at, if you're looking at your screen, do you see a grid of everyone, or do you just see your own face?
A grid of everyone.
Perfect. So hover over your face, and do you see the three-dot menu next to the mute button?
Yes.
Alright, when you click that three-dot menu, do you have an option to update a profile picture?
No.
You don't? Okay. You may need to do it through zoom.us. Do you have a Zoom account, or did you just click the link to come to this meeting?
I've got a Zoom account.
Okay, so you'll need to log on to, at zoom.us, and you can set your profile picture in there. You should have an option, something like account management or profile management, and that's how you'll set your picture. It's a little complicated. Um, but if you want to, some point tomorrow, if you wanna give me a call, I can, um, walk you through it.
Okay.
What's your email address?
Billy Big Block.
B-I-L-L-Y?
B-I-G-B-L-O-C-K.
Email.com. Perfect. I'm gonna send you my contact information.
Okay.
And, uh, at some point, following the meetings, we will set that up.
Okay, sounds good. Now that I know where to look, I may be able to figure it out myself.
You know, it took me a minute, and I'm usually pretty good with that kinda stuff, but it was not easy.
Well, if it took you a minute, I'm not even gonna try.
It took a lot of Googling. If it weren't for Google, I wouldn't know half of what I know. Alright. Mayor looks a little different.
I'm gonna mute myself.
Perfect. I feel like I'm for... We are, and it's working. I've already tested it. I'm gonna go ahead and put up the splash. Splash. So you're, Dan, you're good with all the like, how to share screens and stuff like that, okay? If, in the process of this meeting today, if you have any questions, just let me know. We, I'm gonna, I'll add you to our, do you have Facebook Messenger on your phone? Of course you did. I'm gonna start a group. This is how we communicate during the meetings, and send each other memes and GIFs.
Hello, Bill Howell.
Did you see my picture that I put up, Janice?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
If Commissioner Lucas has something else to say tonight?
Uh-huh. There you go, you're smiling.
Smiling. I got her a smile.
There you go. Well, now that you've been the first commissioner to log in, we just gotta make sure you will do voicemails, emails, read all your documents.
Well, I've done set up, I've set up, I've probably got five, I've probably got 12 different files with all these emails you're sending me, trying to get them separated now, so they're not all in one big one.
Yeah, you'll get two or three from me a day.
I've noticed. Maybe five.
Yes, some days are five.
That's okay, though.
No, some are, here it is, I'll hear. I don't care if you have all my passwords.
I do.
Some are...
I don't wanna be responsible for it.
I'm not muting. Why can I not mute?
Apple S, Homer, 2020 X-Mas, thank you very much.
Why can I not mute? I can't mute myself.
Is it D Grover?
Yeah.
Make-A-Bib?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are we expecting Regina Thurmond?
I'm sorry.
Are we expecting Regina Thurmond to be here?
Not that I know of.
I'll ask her.
Yeah, I don't think she did.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm not looking for you.
Is that true?
Well, we just saw her.
Oh, okay.
Hey, everyone, Rachel Gamble here with Public Affairs. We are getting everything set up. Just so everyone's aware, we are live on YouTube tonight instead of Facebook. And, uh, we have shared the link to this meeting on Facebook, so people will still be able to access it there. And we are still live streaming on our website at makeambib.us, just the same.
And they, if they go to our Facebook page, they'll still be able to click on a link and go to it. We posted it to Facebook. We're just not streaming it off.
I see we have a, uh, Ms. Thurmond on the meeting. Can you just tell me who you're with, please, ma'am? I believe you'll need to unmute your microphone. Can you hear me, Ms. Thurmond? If you can hear me, I cannot hear you. If, uh, if Ms. Thurmond can hear me, uh, for some reason I'm not able to hear you, you may wanna check your microphone settings. I just wanna confirm, um, who you're with before we get started.
Did you say Thurman?
That's correct.
Uh, is it Regina Thurman?
That is the name.
That's Raymond Wilder. He's probably using his daughter's computer.
Oh, okay. Mr. Wilder, can you hear me? Alright, I'm just gonna rename it, so we have the, the correct name on there.
I'll call him. He, I know he's got a, a different computer, so he may not know how to turn it on.
Thank you. And I'm gonna rename, um, our Commissioner-elect, so it tells people who they are.
Put it, put it, hover over your name, and you should see a thing that says... Rachel, that is Raymond.
Okay, is he able to hear okay?
Yeah, he said he can hear you, just can't figure out how to turn his wife's computer on.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I'm going to... I want to send him my phone number. If he can call me, I can try and walk him through it, but I don't wanna say it since we're live streaming. Are you able to view the chat, Mr. Howell?
Yes.
I'm gonna private message you my phone number and put you on mute for a minute. And you can give him my phone number, and he can call me, and I'll, I'll help him figure it out.
Julie, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, just so you weren't looking like supposed to. Thank you.
All right, can you, I, you can hear me?
Yeah, I see it bottom of my corner down here. They're like, we're all going to be here.
Well, I think I can see Rachel. It looks like she's on the phone trying to fix something so that they can get the, every, all the sound.
Rachel and Bill. He's going to be a good commissioner. Janice would be a good commissioner.
Yep.
She knows so much about it, she could really make it work.
I know, huh?
Rachel, Rachel.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I'm having that double image thing again.
Hmm. I'm not sure. Give me just one second, Ms. Winn. Let me wrap up this phone call, and then I'll be right back.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, it's okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and let me call to order this meeting, a pre-commissioned meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission for Tuesday, September the 1st. Let me read this little disclaimer and disclosure to say that out of an abundance of caution, Macon-Bibb County Commission meetings scheduled for Tuesday, September the 1st, 2020, will be available to the Macon-Bibb County Commissioners by video conference. The commission chambers will be closed to the public and press in order to slow the spread of COVID-19. Therefore, the public and press may only access the meeting simultaneously, online at www.maconbib.us, or if you go to Facebook, www.facebook.com, you will find a link there that will take you to a YouTube site where we are being streamed live on YouTube. So we've made both of those available. I think we do have a quorum of commissioners. I see by my little computer list, we have Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Bivens, Commissioner Schlesinger, Commissioner Watkins, and Commissioner Winn on the line with us, as well as Commissioner-elect Wilder, Commissioner-elect Howell, and Mayor-elect Miller. Welcome to each and every one, so with a quorum, I count.
Commissioner Shepherd's here, too.
Oh, good, good, good. So we've got Shepherd and Jones as well. So thank you very much. And so we've got the, got a quorum. And let me then proceed to say, we have a series of announcements for you, but I'll start with probably the most known announcement first, and that is Monday is a holiday. So all offices here at Government Center will be closed for Labor Day. That means that there is a 12 o'clock noon cutoff for getting items in for the agenda, because we won't see them until Tuesday morning. So 12 o'clock noon on Friday to get any items on the agendas. But have a wonderful, safe Labor Day weekend. Next, let me call on Julie Moore to give us an update. And again, before she starts, let me just say how hard she has worked and how diligent she has been, and how she has persevered through tedious chores to continue to try to get all of our expenses in the right category and documented and submitted and approved. Julie, give us, give us the update on where we are with Phase One, Part Two.
Great, well, thank you for that. And we have been working hard, trying to make sure we have all the appropriate receipts so that we are eligible to be reimbursed for all of the money in this Round One, Part Two. Just as a reminder, we submitted Round One, Part One, for $2.4 million, and we were awarded all of that reimbursement, approved for all of those submissions. So since last Tuesday, I've been busy putting together the Round One, Part Two submission, which totaled $5.6 million in expenses. And as of today, we have all $5,612,263.53 submitted, and we've had $5,103,892.36 approved up to this point. So we're still waiting for that last $500,000, but our understanding is that as long as it was in before midnight tonight, that they will continue to review. They did kick back a few things here and there, needing more information, or some summarized information, or a receipt that had sales tax on it. So we have gone, I have gone back and made those adjustments. And so at this point, we're just fingers crossed, waiting on that last $500,000 to be approved. And then we'll be keeping our ears open to see if Round Two is opened up, and what kind of guidance the state will be giving us at that point.
That's great. Women know how to spend money.
And, and.
We, we can handle, we can handle that.
And get reimbursed.
Good job, Julie.
Anyways, Julie's done a great job, and we'll certainly keep everybody closely posted. She did send to Commissioner Chairman Watkins of the Operations and Finance Committee an updated list as she would change figures and this, that, and the other, and submit in different categories. So she sent an updated list to Commissioner Watkins earlier today, right, Julie?
This afternoon, yeah. We've, we've been working down to the wire, trying to get it all in, but I wanted to reorganize it so that you all could see it in the allowable expenses. And if Commissioner Watkins wants me to, I can send it to the rest of the commissioners.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I got it just a little while ago. Looks good.
Just a second. Let me go to settings and turn off on... Wait, I just did, I just did that.
Yeah, we are fixing an internet issue with the mayor's computer. If y'all will just bear with us for a second. One of the joys of live streaming meetings.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm, I think I'm back now. And Julie, thank you for that report. We'll go on. The governor has issued a couple of new executive orders and extended his emergency order, and I'll ask Michael McNeil to give us an update right quick on the emergency order and the latest executive order.
Thank you, ma'am. That, that about sums it up, to be honest. The governor issued two new executive orders yesterday. The first one extends the Georgia Public Health Emergency through October 10th, which, as a reminder, is the the legal justification for holding our meetings by Zoom. And so we continue to be authorized to meet remotely, at least through October the 10th. The other order that he issued was the next in his Empowering a Healthy Georgia series. And this, this order is effective from today through September 15th, which is two weeks from today. And I reviewed it closely and did not see any substantive changes from the last two weeks. So everything that we went over last time, two weeks ago, continues to hold true. And I would expect the next order to come out probably either Monday, the 14th, or Tuesday, the 15th, for the second half of September. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions or comments by commissioners of Michael on the governor's orders? If not, we'll move, we'll move on. And I think Spencer Hawkins is on the line, and he can give us an update on where we are with the, our local COVID numbers. Spencer, are you here?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Good. Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners and mayor. We've got a bit of good news, but like the governor said, we can't take our foot off the gas just yet. We are starting to see over the last, you know, four or five days, a slight, very slight decrease in our numbers. And these are the numbers that we're looking at, which is the seven-day moving average based on date of onset of symptoms, as according to the Georgia Department of Health website. So just real quick, the last dates that we, I'll give you the last three dates that we have, which is August 16th, 17th, and 18th, respectively, those averages are 52, 47.1, and 45.3. Those death rates are 27 point, sorry, 2.7, 2.4, and 1.7. So these are obviously moving in the right direction. We're excited to see that. Like the governor said, you know, we can't take our foot off the gas just yet. And I wanted to provide you another quick update, too, as far as what we are doing here at Macon-Bibb County to continue to protect our community and protect middle Georgia. Like I've said many times, the only thing that we have to fight COVID right now is our PPE hand washing and social distancing. And on the PPE front, your emergency management agency today has received and inventoried and processed 43, sorry, 430,000 masks, 152,000 gloves, and 27,000 bottles of hand sanitizer. As far as distribution, this has been a wonderful partnership between our community and everything that we have going on. Is to our departments and community partners, we have distributed 61,000 masks to the community. This is in partnership with our recreation department, and as they're working on giving out masks at all 10 of their rec centers, they have handed out just over 97,000 masks to our community. And just recently, we have stocked our county vehicles. So thank your sheriff's office, patrol vehicles, public works, parks and beautification, facilities, EMA. And we've given out 25,000 masks to those community departments to have them in their vehicles. So as they're going about their jobs, as they're doing their business in the community, once again, we don't want to find people, we don't want to get people in trouble. We want to protect people. And so they now have at least a box of masks, which is 50 masks in their vehicles, that they can feel free to hand one or two masks to those citizens that need them. And that is our goal, to get this PP out to everybody that needs it. Another wonderful partnership that we're working on, and this is just a kind of a teaser before the full announcement in the next week or so, is EMA has partnered with Newtown, Visit Macon, and the Chamber of Commerce to develop the Make It Safe pledge. And that's an opportunity for businesses, workplaces throughout the community, can kind of sign up to say, here is what we are doing, keep making safe. Here's how we're going to do it, and here's what we're going to do to be a community to get through this. So far, we've had about 30 or so workplaces sign on to this pledge. And then, like I said, in the next week or so, Newtown's going to do a full rollout. So once you see that, please, Make It Safe, share that with your constituents, share that with the community, so we can get that out. And then finally, I'll close on the fact, like the mayor said, we do have Labor Day coming up this Sunday. We know that's usually the time for gatherings and barbecues and spending time with your friends and family. But as we're going about our weekend, I advise everybody, please, please, stay safe. Understand that as much as we'd all love to get together to enjoy, you know, a hot dog and a hamburger with, with our friends and family, now may not be the year. Please, as you're going about your business, stay COVID safe this Labor Day weekend. Do what you need to. Have a Zoom barbecue. Do whatever you can to stay safe. And that's all I have pending any questions, sir.
Very good, Spencer. Thank you very much. A virtual barbecue. Okay, we, we can try, a Zoom barbecue, I think is what you call it. We can try anything once. Any questions or comments from commissioners of?
A Zoom barbecue won't smell and taste the same, but we'll try it.
That's right. Next, we've got an update on film projects, and I'm going to ask Michael McNeil to sign back in and tell us about that. Michael?
Thank you, mayor. So we have two ongoing or current film projects I just want to let the commission know about. One was over the weekend, there was just a short closure down at the skate park down at Carolyn Creighton Park, and a short period of intermittent traffic control that was conducted at the corner of Fifth Street and Poplar Street for just a few hours on Sunday night in connection with a show that is filming at the Coliseum right now. And then the other is a independent film, a small independent film crew that is... They don't have certain dates set yet, but they're looking at potentially coming in to use a couple of county facilities for just a few hours. These are, these are both, you know, very low-impact kind of closures. But, you know, I just want to let the commission know that groups are starting to, starting to look back at conducting film activities again. And so we're, we're being very mindful of, you know, limiting their, their ability to do that in a way that is safe and make sure that they're following safe protocols for COVID and that kind of thing. So it's, you know, just a couple of, a couple of small closures have been proposed.
Good. Questions or comments by commissioners of Michael on that report? Hearing none, then next item on the agenda is to review the agenda for tonight's commission meeting, which I hope will start right at 6 o'clock. We'll convene as close to 6 o'clock as we can. Prayer tonight will be given by Commissioner Allen. Thank you, Commissioner Allen, for agreeing to do that. Following that, I have been asked, and we'll read a proclamation for Public Safety Sunday, which is coming up this coming Sunday, the 6th, and that will be the beginning of basically Public Safety Week. And of course, we all recognize the significance of September the 11th. That'll be that same week. So I'll read, I'll read the proclamation. Then we'll go on with the approval of minutes from the pre-commissioned meeting and the regular commission meeting of August the 18th. Those minutes have been prepared and circulated. We'll see if there are any changes, additions, or corrections, and then go to reports from our standing committees, Operations and Finance. And I think Chairman Watkins will probably give us that report. The next is Economic and Community Development, and I think Chairman Lucas will give us that report. Public safety, is there a report? No, well, there's always a report. Every day, every day is Public Safety Day in Macon-Bibb County. So thank you, Chairman Winn.
You've got that.
Yep, yep, yep. And then Facilities and Engineering, Chairman Jones, will you give that report?
Yes.
Okay.
I was thinking we didn't have one, but, okay.
Oh, no, no, okay. So no, no report there either. All right, I'm sorry. And Michael, do we have any public comments that we have received on agenda items, Janice? Have we received any that we need to read?
No, no public comments whatsoever, agenda or non-agenda, mayor.
Good, okay. So we'll dispense with that and go straight into the consent agenda. I think the consent agenda is going to be universal approval. It's, most of them, if not, in fact, all of them are existing locations that currently sell beer and wine. And there's a change of ownership that has precipitated, you know, the request for the new license and the new agent's name, new owner's name. The first is on, it's Riverside 2700 LLC, located at 2700 Riverside Drive. In case you're trying to place that, it's between Pierce Avenue and Wimby's on the left-hand side of the street as you head north, right there at the entrance to the interstate. At that intersection, there's a bank there, and then this little corner, this is a, for beer and wine package sales to go. And as I say, it's an existing location with gas and alcohol sales. This is merely a change of ownership. The next one is Camu 51 LLC, doing businesses, the Quick Serve, located at 2260 Shurling Drive. This also is an existing location with gas and alcohol. It's a Sunoco station. It's the corner of New Clinton Road. Change of ownership there, beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The next is Nepal Incorporated, doing businesses, 1313 One Stop Shop, located at 1105 Gray Highway. It's an Exxon station that doesn't even have a walk-in port, but it's got gas and, and I say fuel sales and alcohol, beer and wine package sales to go. Again, change of ownership to an existing location. And the last one that just came in recently, in fact, I think it was added today, is a new alcohol license for The Pool, V.I.P.U.L., 3010 LLC, doing businesses, Tom's Mart, located at 3010 Houston Avenue at Macon, Georgia. It is an existing location and has beer and wine package sales to go currently. Any questions?
Does it have gas pumps?
I do not think that one has gas pumps. I do not think that one has gas pumps.
So why don't we do that, Michael? I've got issues. Why doesn't that, tell me why that doesn't constitute a Vice Mart? I know we just passed a law, it's still fresh, but.
Sure, commissioner. So the Vice Mart ordinance takes effect today. You may remember that the effective date was September 1st, which is today. And under the due process provisions of the 14th Amendment, as soon as the applicant files their application with our Business Development Services, they vest in the rights as the law is that day. So anything that's filed, any application filed up through yesterday would be under the rules before the Vice Mart ordinance was enacted, even though we're, we're asking the commission to vote on it today. But any applications followed today, filed today, and going forward, those new Vice Mart rules will apply.
Okay, rules, okay.
Any other questions or comments about the consent agenda? If not, can, can I, yes, sir?
If Item D was added today to the agenda, it needs to be added by motion under Open Meetings Act.
It was added today. So I need to get, I need to get a motion to add Item D to the consent agenda, since it was added today and not 24 hours in advance. Can I get a motion to do that?
Chairman?
Got a motion in a second? Well, I'll, I'll second it.
I'll second.
I think I can do that, too.
We were not very enthusiastic.
Good, thank you, Scotty. Shepherd's going to second it for us, to add this to the agenda, all in favor of adding it to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Oppose, say no. I think the, I think the ayes have it, so it's on the agenda uh now. Now, so, so can I get a, can I get a motion to issue all four licenses as requested?
Second.
By Commissioner Wynn, and second, uh, so further discussion here, none, all in favors of issuing these four licenses, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The ayes have it, so uh they'll be on the agendas, the consent uh agenda for final action at our six o'clock meeting. Um, next, uh, we've got uh the uh old, old business. Um, and old, old business, the first item of old business is uh the changes that we made to the code of ethics. Uh, and we may not be through with changes to the code of ethics, but these are some changes that we agreed on, committee of the whole heard that and recommends approval. Uh, i- item B uh is a, an appointment to the Keep Making Bibb Beautiful Board, Stephen Adams. Uh, and economic and community development heard that, recommends approval. Item C is an appointment of Billy Pitts to the Board of Tax Assessors. Economic and Community Development Committee heard that and recommends approval. Uh, same with the resolution to appoint Sidney Solomon to the Keep Making Bibb Beautiful Board. That's item D, and economic and community development recommends approval there. Uh, next is, is an ordinance to amend chapter four of the code to allow uh an additional hour or so um in the morning and in the evening on Sundays for alcohol sales. Uh, and the Economic and Community Development Committee heard that uh and recommends approval. Uh, next, item F uh is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Evidence-Based Associates LLC in the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars using the Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant Funds. Uh, Operations and Finance heard that and recommends approval. Item G uh is an ordinance uh to authorize the Macon-Bibb County Government to establish a, a Homeless Support CARES Act Subrecipient Grant Fund in the amount of a thousand dollars. This is the first of four. Did I say four? I'm sorry, four million doll- I mean, uh, the first of four uh, uh resolutions, each for, for uh up to uh, uh, a million dollars. Duke, did we make a, a, a proposed amendment to that to say up to? And, and it, Michael, was that, did we do that? And may need to ask for approval rather than just saying a million dollars. The finance department said it might help to say up to a, a million dollars uh to give us some, some flexibility uh, uh there. Uh, so what do we need to do? Do we need to do a, need to do a committee amendment here on all four of these? Uh, to, 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 to add those two words, up to? Michael, anything else that it did, the, the amendment?
I, I hadn't prepared those, Mayor. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't realize that I was asked to do that.
Oh, well, then if we don't have them, we, we don't have them.
I mean, I, yeah, you could just write in the words up to. I could do it from now.
Yeah, we can, we can just write them in right now if they, if the, if the.
Well, that, that was the recommendation for us, rather than just saying a million dollars, appropriating a million. Say up to a million dollars, and if that's okay with the, the Commissioner Watkins, he's the sponsor of each of these. Commissioner Watkins, any problem with that, sir?
Not really.
Okay, we, we're considered a friendly, a friendly amendment to say up to, and Michael will do that. Uh, the second, uh, item H uh is the same thing, a million dollars under this little subrecipient uh grant fund for feeding the vulnerable uh, uh, under the CARES Act. A subrecipient grant item I uh was a school board uh support CARES Act up to a million dollars uh, uh there. Um, and the final one is the uh, a million dollars in the Local Small Business CARES Act. And each of the four of these, as I understand it, is gonna have to have procedural uh rules and recommendations or rules and regulations uh prepared for how the money is to be spent. And hopefully, we can take a good guess and get some guidance and direction so that we spend it in accordance with the, the CARES Act and get reimbursed for most, if not all, of the money.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Wynn, yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. I, I'm, I'm sorry to have to ask this. I did have to leave before the discussion of this last week. I had to leave early. But question, and if people are going to put in for some of this, some of these funds, for example, the day after we voted, this was voted on or discussed, I had one of the nonprofits saying, how can I get some of that money? Well, are they going to be given the um, I guess it's the rules, regulations? What do they got to have? What do they have to have? Receipts of money spent and document? If it's spent for COVID-nineteen expenses versus just normal expenses, how are they gonna do that?
Uh, I.
And are, are we giving them those instructions?
The, the short answer is yes, but I'll, I'll go back to my standard short answer. Let's ask Duke. And see if he can shed a little light. I think we're gonna have to promulgate rules and regulations.
Right. So, and by the way, don't, don't we need the same up-to language in these as well?
Right, all, all, all four.
Right. Um, so the, the short answer is we, we need to treat these like grants. And I'm not a grant expert, but the, just, we would have to promulgate and we will have to do this. Guidelines asked who, who can, who can qualify for whatever, how much they can qualify, what it, you know, what things they're buying, et cetera. And I don't have, all, all this does is you say, oh, no, all these do is just appropriate the potential money. And we'll have to do the, basically a grant procedure, which I'm not an expert on, but I see Julie on. And but we'll have to figure that out so that people who do apply can be treated appropriately and consistently with all three of these things.
Will, will they be given instructions on how to?
Yeah, right. That would be part of it. You have to do that, because otherwise they would not do it.
And Julie.
Suggestions, we come back to y'all with some information about that, because it, right, to just making sure the money's there. Um, if y'all vote on this in, in commission, and then we'll have to figure out how that works.
Right, but I think, I think.
Want to make sure that anybody that applies for, that, that it's done properly so that we can re- be reimbursed, because we don't want to be spending up to four million dollars.
That is correct, and that's a big part of coming up with those guidelines.
Okay.
You're right.
Thank you.
Yep.
But i- if I understand correctly, and Julie, uh, I think all of this money that we're talking about in round two, uh, if there is a round two, and once we find out exactly, I think it has to be spent by December the thirty-first of twenty-twenty. Is that right, Julie? So it's not.
Correct, and I, and I also think the email I just sent all the commissioners and the mayor you have in front of you at least gives the allowable categories of expenditures. So I think building off of what we know so far they've said is eligible, and I'm sure there are um businesses and entities in town that maybe have receipts of where they've spent money for PPE, for example, or some, some, something that they could see within this allowable expense that might be a place to start. But just give us a, a little moment to put a package together. We've also been receiving calls, um, and I just have told people that you all would need to confirm this tonight, and then there'd be a process by which we'd have to get together the information um to provide for folks so that they could uh fill out paperwork and make sure we have all of the necessary documents so that we could be reimbursed from that, from the, the second round, this round two funding that we hope is coming.
Right, and, and uh, but I do want to commend Chairman Watkins for being proactive on this and giving us some at least framework and, and appropriating up to a million dollars in each of these four categories. So it gives us a jump start, because we're gonna be moving fast between to get the, get the program set up and the money distributed and spent um by December the thirty-first. So stay tuned for further details. Uh, item J uh on the agenda under old business is uh, uh, an ordinance to authorize Macon-Bibb County to establish a local small business CARES Act supplemental grant fund amount of up to a million dollars. And that's to try to help some of our local small businesses that have been impacted by COVID. Uh, item K is a resolution to ratify and authorize the mayor to execute a Georgia Department of Transportation contract to accept CARES Act funding for the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount of a million sixty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars uh with no local match. Operations and Finance recommends approval of that, and that's all of the old business. Uh, then we've got a number of items of new business that I will read and, and refer uh when we get uh down to that. But uh, I'll refer each of them to uh, uh committees uh at that point in time, and then that'll bring us all the way down to, to uh, since no, nobody for non-agenda item uh comments, no public comments, uh, we'll take a motion to adjourn after we read the new business. So, wow, here we are at twenty-five minutes to six, and, and we, I think, are through with the agenda uh for uh pre-commission. Uh, any other, any other business that we need to take up in pre-commission? Excellent, excellent. Well, then.
Mr. Mayor, you're, you spoke too soon.
Uh-oh.
I, I just wanted to, uh, I noticed that under new items, new business items, there's a um, an item that talks about additional funding for the Board of Elections.
Yes, ma'am.
And so what I'd like to do is for us to, uh, I'd like, uh, I've, and I've already asked the legal department if they would uh develop a um resolution which gives support to the Board of Elections in the things that they're trying to do to increase the ease in voting. Uh, they are part, Board, our Board of Elections is part of a lawsuit um that a voter, voter rights group has filed, and Bibb County is included. And so everything that they can do to show that they're making it as easy as possible for voters to cast that uh, that vote, the better off they are. So the resolution um just simply uh gives our support to the Board of Elections in their endeavors to identify in a, a satellite voting site. And I think they're already working on that. I don't know whether they've talked to the administration or not. Uh, the other is to identify locations for more drop boxes, not a whole lot of them, because they have to be secured, but additional uh drop boxes for the absentee um, uh ballots. Um, and the other is to uh support their request for a Sunday voting, which would take place after the Saturday voting that's already on the agenda. So I'm going to have that uh, that resolution, and I thank the legal department for working and pulling that together. But that's something that will be for consideration at the um, I guess committees uh, next week.
On, on September the eighth, right. And but remember, now, it's all, all gotta be down uh, by nu- noon on Friday. So uh, I, I'm sure our legal department are gonna be working overtime twenty-nine then to get everything back, get everything down. Yes, sir. May I approach?
Uh, ju- just to um, update uh, commission on what Ms. Lucas was referring to. Uh, we've had requests to put a um drop box on county property that has to have a certain amount of requirements, such as security cameras and everything. Uh, the property we've um offered to them is at the courthouse. So they've already, um, I believe they've ordered the mailbox, we're waiting for it to be delivered, and uh BSO uh will assist us with the security of that over at the courthouse. Additionally, they asked for um a place to set up um additional early ver- uh, early voting sites. Uh, I believe before they used the terminal station, there was no space available at the terminal station. So I've offered the rec centers. Um, initially, when I spoke, uh, I thought they only wanted one, but they sent me an email yesterday saying they would like to look at three. Uh, I told them that, that we, we will make them available, but they had to go back and find out how much it would cost them to run three additional sites. And they're giving us that information, so there could be an additional supplemental coming uh for early voting sites. I'm waiting to get that information. But again, we've offered the rec centers um for additional early voting sites, because they're currently closed.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Moffett, for that update. And yes, we'll have, I'm sure, a spirited conversation uh next Tuesday about that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say one more thing. Macon-Bibb County is behind. We only have one early voting site. We used to have two. We only have one now. Uh, I know we're not as large as Atlanta, but there are other places, like I think in Houston County. Some of those cities in Houston County have two or three satellite sites. So that doesn't speak well for Macon-Bibb. We need to provide more than one satellite. I'm not saying a whole bunch, but at least one more uh this election cycle.
Good. All right, a- as I say, I'm sure we'll have a, a spirited uh conversation about that next Tuesday. Uh, anything, anything further for us at the pre-commission meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Michael?
I've, I've got the four uh committee of the whole amendments uh prepared.
Good. Why, why don't you review those for us, please, sir?
All, all I did was add the word up to into the, the caption. Um, let's see, so this is, for example, this is the homelessness one. I just add the words up to into the caption right here. And then um, down in the, the first uh section where it sets the amount, add the word up to right there as well. I did that for all four of them. And that's, that's been circulated via email to uh yourself, to Ms. Ross, to Mr. Groover, and um via Zoom to uh everybody on this call.
Good. Any questions of Michael about the amendment to those four companion uh resolutions? Uh, if not, then we'll, we'll vote on the amended uh ordinance for those, those four ordinances. All right, anything else to come before us in the pre-commission meeting? Good. If not, uh, stand at ease, uh, stay plugged in, stay tuned in, don't go anywhere. But uh, stand at ease, you can cut off your video if you want to and cut off your audio and make yourself comfortable, and we will convene at six o'clock uh for our regular commission meeting. Uh, the pre-commission meeting is adjourned.
I'm gonna go ahead and just mute everyone in this interim time um and put up the, the screen, and we'll see y'all back here at six. And just to clarify, we will still be live streaming during this, so we don't have to start a second stream. So just be aware of that as you uh go about your business.
Hey, Raymond.
Hey. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna try this on my phone.
Glad you figured out how to join us.
All right. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. Yeah, actually, I went to my phone and just gonna try it there.
Okay.
So can you see you okay or how does that work?
Yeah, we can see you.
Okay, all right.
Well, congratulations on your retirement.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm trying a few different computers I got here.
Oh, good. You'll get the hang of it.
Oh, yeah.
And if you don't, we're here to help.
Oh, yeah. We may even try to get by there, you know, one day this weekend, you know, because I am off a little more now.
Okay, okay. Well, just let me know what I can do to help you.
All right. Now, if I wanna cut my, my video part off here now, I can do that, can't I?
Right. You just click on the video and you'll disappear.
Did I, did I call it disappear?
Right. Your picture will disappear, but your name will remain.
I got you. Did it disappear when I just done that or?
No, it did not.
I'm not doing something right then. All right. Getting used to all this equipment.
There should be two buttons at the bottom. One should be mute button. And the other one should be a video button. And so if you click on the video button, you should disappear.
You'll see.
There you go.
And I can mute this.
And he's gone.
Okay, sounds good.
And he's back.
Try that then.
Okay, that's super. Thank you, Raymond.
We've got about eight minutes till 6 o'clock when we'll start the commission meeting. We are still currently live streaming, but I've got everyone's mic turned off. And I've got a screen up letting people know. So we've got about eight minutes.
Commissioner Bevins, do you need some assistance? You're muted. I can't hear you.
Yeah, I wanted to go back like it was. I don't know what I was doing. When you were talking just now, I heard you and I wanted to let you know you could be heard.
Oh, okay. I bet you did.
But whatever I did caused this. And I don't like looking at me this big. The smaller you can make it, the better.
I can, I can help. Did you figure it out or?
No, I can't. I'm looking at this big me and I'd rather see a real little me.
All right. So on, are you on a, on a computer or a tablet?
Computer.
All right. Okay, so you should have an option somewhere in your menus to click gallery or, or you know what? You may have to swipe. Try swiping your screen to the right and see if that works.
With my hand?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Can you get on? I couldn't, I couldn't understand. Sorry. You can move closer if you need.
Commissioner Bevins, this is Sarah. You may just need to touch your screen. Or actually use the mouse to touch the screen.
Oh, I don't really have a mouse. I'm using a screen thing.
And you should see what looks like a a checkerboard or a grid.
Don't see that either. I see something on here that says edit full screen.
Okay.
But then it just gets small. Well, it's smaller, but that's still, okay. It gets smaller.
So you should click where it says exit full screen.
He's not in full screen. He said enter full screen.
Oh, I thought it said, I thought he said exit full screen.
There should be.
Yeah, I saw that, but now, now it's messed up anymore.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna test something real quick. Commissioner Bevins, did that change it?
No, now, now I got something worse. I got a big white screen with Zoom written in the middle of it. And I, I may have to go out and come back in.
Actually, if you do, try, do you have your keypad there in front of you?
Keypad? Yeah, yeah.
Do Alt Tab.
Okay. I don't know if paying attention to Alt, so I don't know what it is.
It should be right next to your spacebar. Hold down your Alt key.
There it is. Alt what now?
And then your Tab button.
Okay, Tab button. Shoot, I don't see the Tab button now.
It should be up next to your Q.
Next to what?
The Q, the letter Q.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Oh, yeah, there it is.
Okay, so when you do that Alt Tab, what it'll do is it'll change the window that you're looking at? So if you'll, when you push it, if you'll look up, do you see where it changes from that Zoom window to one of the other windows you have open?
Okay, yeah, that time it did, yeah.
Okay, now do you see everybody?
I see a couple people, but I'm still too big.
Okay, okay. Now, if you look at your top of that window, you should see where it says speaker view?
Speaker view.
Or it should say gallery view?
I haven't found that yet.
Okay. Try pushing, remember that Alt button I was telling you about?
Yeah.
Okay, try pushing, holding that down and then pushing your F1 key.
Hold that down and F1 key.
F1, it will be across the top of your keyboard, next to the escape button.
I'm looking up there, but I don't see it. See. What button am I looking for?
The F1.
F1, okay.
So if you hold that Alt button and then push F1.
Okay. I just still don't see F1.
On the very top row of your buttons, there's escape and then F1. They're a little bitty. F2.
I'm looking up there, but I still don't see it.
Look under, look above the number 1, 2, 3.
Yeah, that's why I was looking up there.
Well, under, up above them, there's, there should be a F1, F2.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just missing it somehow, yeah.
I'm gonna give you a call because the mayor's gonna go ahead and start the next session.
Okay.
Okay.
We are ready whenever you are, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6 o'clock and I'd like to call to order this regular commission meeting of the Macon Bev County Commission for Tuesday, September the 1st. And, and welcome everybody. Again, we're meeting via Zoom to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. And we appreciate everybody's consideration of that. Again, if you are trying to tune in and, and listen and watch, the public and press may access this meeting simultaneously online at www.maconbib.us or www.facebook.com. And there's a link there that'll take you to YouTube where we're streaming live on, on YouTube. So with that having been said, and we're officially now called to order, I think it most appropriate that we start our meeting with an invocation. And Commissioner Allen has agreed to lead us in, give us an invocation. Commissioner Allen, let me call on you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll close your eyes, please. Dear God in heaven, you know our struggles here on earth. From the beginning of time, as Cain and Abel, brothers are still killing brothers today. Yes, Lord, your works in the Bible stands true always as stated. God, you created us, but we need help. Please show those in charge how to handle this deadly virus. Those elected that they serve the pub people, the public needs. But Lord, we should serve you first. Lord, please watch over this new mayor and commissioners coming into office, not just in Macon, but in our entire nation. Watch over those that are still in office. I ask this in your name. You are the King of Kings. Amen and amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Next, this is a special week coming up. We wanna obviously wish everybody a wonderful Labor Day. But as we start September, we're all aware of September 11th and the significance of September the 11th. A proclamation has been prepared and with your permission. A proclamation has been prepared and with your permission and without objection, I'd like to read that proclamation at this point. Whereas on September the 11th, 2001, 19 years ago, four passenger jets were hijacked and crashed into the Twin Towers, the Pentagon and a field in Shankville, Pennsylvania, killing nearly 3,000 innocent people. And whereas that day, police and firefighters bravely dashed into burning buildings to save the lives of those trapped inside, knowing that they may face certain death. And whereas of the 2,977 people who died that day in New York City, over 412 were public safety personnel. And whereas it is estimated that 2.86 million people serve in public safety, meaning less than 1% of our population protects the 340 million Americans plus visitors, students and workers that come to America. And whereas firefighters, EMS and police have become our city and nation's first responders responding to over 25 million 911 calls. And whereas the people of Macon Bibb County set aside Sunday, September the 6th, 2020 to recognize, honor and applaud the approximately 700 men and women of public safety who risked their lives every day and every night to protect us and keep us safe. And whereas in light of the recent adverse publicity against people involved in public safety, it is a good and noble thing for us to affirm and applaud the men and women serving in public safety across America. Now therefore, I Robert A. B. Rickett do hereby proclaim Sunday, September the 6th, 2020 as Public Safety Sunday in Macon Bibb County and I urge all citizens to thank and show gratitude to all public, public safety workers for all that they do and have done as they sacrifice their own safety and well-being to keep us safe. And witness whereof I have heron to set my hand and cause the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed this first day of September 2020. I'm going to provide that. Exactly right, exactly right. We, and, and we don't usually do this, but all in favor of the proclamation signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. Then the proclamation is unanimously approved and, and we'll, we'll issue that accordingly. The next thing I want to do is to go to approval of the minutes. The minutes have been prepared. Our pre-commission meeting minutes of August 18th and regular commission meeting of August 18th, are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve both sets of minutes? Got, got a, got a motion and second, if, is, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, both sets of minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda are reports from our standing committees. And first is Operations and Finance Committee. That report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on August the 25th and took the following actions. We approved the following, an agreement with evidence-based associates for services to the juvenile court for a maximum of $361,872 using the juvenile justice incentive grant funds. The committee approved the establishment of Four Cares Act Sub Recipient Grants Fund in the amount of $1 million each for the following purposes: homelessness support, feeding of the vulnerable, school board initiatives and support for local small businesses. The committee approved a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation to accept Cares Act funding for the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount of $1,063,495. And the finance director gave a monthly report on the financials of Macon Bibb County. This concludes the report of the Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next is Economic and Community Development Committee and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on August 25th, 2020 and took following actions. The committee approved the following appointments. Steven Adams and Sidney Solomon to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board. Billy Pitts to the Macon Bibb County Board of Tax Assessors. The committee approved amending Chapter 4 to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. until midnight. And the committee heard a report on confiscated funds in the sheriff's office and the district attorney's office. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. There's no report from the Public Safety Committee, although every day is Public Safety Appreciation Day, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do want to say I appreciate the proclamation you just read about public safety for this Sunday and I hope everybody will thank our public safety workers that have done such a wonderful job right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and there was no report from Facilities and Engineering Committee, is that right Chairman Jones? Right. All right, sir. There are no public comments on agenda items as we go forward. So we, we will proceed with the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of four applications for alcoholic beverages. Each of these applications is accompanied by all of the requisite paperwork which consists of a certification from the sheriff of a satisfactory background check of the applicant, a certification from the Business Development Services Office that the appropriate license fees have been tendered for the type of alcoholic beverages to be served, a certificate from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the, the location complies with zoning requirements, a certification from the county engineer that the location also meets all the distance separation requirements of our code and a copy of the ad that ran in the paper. Each of these applications is accompanied by that documentation. And the first is by, I'm sorry, first application is by Riverside 2700 LLC located at 2700 Riverside Drive. It is an existing location with gas and alcohol sales currently. A change of ownership precipitates this new license application. It is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The second application is by Camu 51 LLC doing business is Quick Serve at 2260, I'm sorry, Quick Serve 2260 located at 2260 Sherrling Drive in Macon. Now that also is an existing location with gas and alcohol sales. It is a, a change of ownership that requires this license, new license application. The third application is by Nepal Incorporated doing business is 1313 One Stop Shop located at 1105 Gray Highway. That also is an existing convenience store with gas and alcohol sales. It's for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. And again, a change of ownership requires this application. The final application is from Vipool 3010 LLC doing business is Tom's Mart located at 3010 Houston Avenue. And that also is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The committee of the whole recommends approval of these four license applications. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those four licenses signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it and those four licenses will be issued as requested. That takes us then to the old business item of our agenda. And the, the first item is a revision to our Code of Ethics and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Section 2-17 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances entitled Code of Ethics for the purpose of clarifying procedures with respect to the handling of ethic complaints against Macon Bibb County officials and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah. I, I fully support this and all of you know why. I've gone through the process and it is not a fun situation to go through to finally have the eventual outcome to be, you know, there's no violation. Luckily, I had this sharp, hot notch team of attorneys from our legal department who were there in the court to defend me. But, um, and, and I'm joking there. Y'all supposed to, that's supposed to be funny. Y'all supposed to laugh at that. Anyway, they were a good group and they did defend me and the judge decided that there was no basis to the complaints. But I am real happy that we are looking at putting some more definition into this. I do think that in the future, we need to look at a fee for submitting these complaints because it does require additional work on the part of folks in municipal court. And there is an additional fee for a hearing officer if one is necessary. And so there are expenses that come with people filing these complaints. And the other thing that I would like to see and in the future, I probably will propose that there be some way of the person who is falsely accused being compensated for those faults and especially malicious attacks. And so, but today I'm not going to offer any amendments. I'm just gonna support it as written. And then later on, I think that we will see the need of doing those other things.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. Next is, next is a, a resolution to make an appointment to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Steven H. Adams to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item C is an appointment to the Board of Tax Assessors and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Billy Pitts to the Macon Bibb County Board of Tax Assessors and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an appointment, a second appointment to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Sidney M. Solomon to the Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to slightly revise the hours of sale on Sundays of alcoholic beverages and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend Chapter 4 of the Macon Bibb County Code of Ordinances to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages by the package to go on Sundays from 11:00 a.m. until midnight and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, what?
Commissioner Winn and then Commissioner Jones.
One small question. What was the, what were the hours before this resolution?
12, 12:30 p.m. until 11 o'clock p.m.
So this is an extended.
It adds about an hour in the morning and about an hour in the evening. And kind of makes it uniform across the state.
Is the right, that's what the rest of the, the cities and counties have?
That's my impression of what they're all doing, yes. Commissioner Jones, did you have a comment or question? Well, you're muted. You unmute yourself, please, sir. There you go.
Question was, I was thinking this applied to, so, so this applies to on-premise accounts that are able to do this. This doesn't apply to packaged stores and other stores that are already off-premise accounts.
No, I think it does. Michael?
This, this is just the opposite. So we already have on-premise accounts with the brunch bill from 2018 where they can serve from 11:00 a.m. until midnight and this matches the package stores, package stores, grocery stores, convenience stores, so that they're on the same hours as restaurants and hotels are, 11:00 a.m. until midnight.
Yeah, and, and that's what I thought it did. So that's confused me there initially, but I, I don't know that they want that, but perhaps they do. I've not heard that, but that means they're open seven days a week.
But, but my impression is you don't have to open.
If they want to be, if they want to be. But competition makes you do that.
It can. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. Got two noes, Jones and Winn. I'm sorry, and Bivens. Okay, so that's three. So we, we got six, six to three, the ayes have it. Well, I'm sorry, five to three, because, may I approach them? Are you on the line?
I am, sir.
Good, okay. So six to three, the ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Next is a, an ordinance for services at the juvenile court, provision of services at the juvenile court. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Evidence-Based Associates LLC for services provided to the Macon Bibb County Juvenile Court for a maximum of $361,872 using the juvenile justice incentive grant funds and substantially the same form as attached here to as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance which is one of four companion ordinances to, to appropriate up to a million dollars as the amended amount, up to a million dollars each for four purposes. And I'll ask the clerk to read the first of four by caption, please.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the Macon Bibb County Government to establish a homelessness support Cares Act Sub Recipient Grant Fund in the amount of up to a million dollars to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting local agencies that provide support for the chronically homeless persons in Macon Bibb County that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval as amended to add up to a million dollars. Is there further discussion about the ordinance? I've got Commissioner Jones, then I've got Commissioner Allen and then Commissioner Winn.
Yes, sir. I would ask that the sponsor give us his summary, reasons for the different categories, his thought process and how he came up with the amounts. I think he answered that last week. And then I'd ask for Julie to give us an opinion on. And then I'll have comments after I hear answers.
Commissioner Watkins, he's, he's basically asked, asked you first and then Julie.
So the purposes of, of the, the one that, this one is on homeless support, to provide support organizations like Loews and Fishes, Daybreak. And others who were home, home first, who were providing services to individuals who may who may be homeless to provide them with, um, different sorts of PPE to allow them to keep their facilities clean, um, those type of things. But also I believe there are some opportunities for homeless prevention services as well. As I've been talking through the course of the week with, um, this other partners, as, as evictions begin, there's some opportunities there as well to provide aid to our citizens as they deal with COVID and not having money.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Jones, uh, Julie Moore has left and is not available at this point. Do you have further questions?
Uh, comments? My, you know, it's all for worthy causes. I don't, I don't question that. They're all well-intentioned. I, I, I question the amounts as to how much is needed. There's not been a, a cost benefit analysis done as to what's needed where. For instance, the Board of Education in my, in my view does not need the money. That's one category and I just don't think it's been well thought out enough. And I think we're pre- premature as far as where it's going and what determines, what, what are the determining factors on what is spent where and how do we determine the equitable legitimate distribution of said funds?
Very good. Uh, Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a question I've got is two, two parts. Number one, how long do we have before that money has to be spent? Question number two, do we have mental illness in that part with that money that's being utilized? Cause some of those people with COVID that's been kicked out of their homes, that's lost their homes, that's homeless now, are mentally ill. They need, they're gonna need places to live and we don't need them on the streets.
Right. My impression of what Julie said earlier, and I can be corrected, was that the money had to be spent by December the 31st. And if we're careful in the way that we craft the, the regulations for it, uh, we can be reimbursed hopefully out of these CARES Act funds that are coming down in Phase Two and maybe Phase Three.
So does this have to be done tonight or can we wait until Julie gets back and we know the whole detail?
Well, I-
Julie, not the commissioner?
Right, right. We, 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 you, my, my impression is that this is the first, this is the first step of a number that will have to be taken to implement this. So I, I, I think this gives us a good start and we can start working on the regulations and, and rules. But we still gonna be waiting for, uh, the, uh, rules to come out for money from Phase Two and, and learn about that. Commissioner Winn, I've got you next and then Michael wanted to make a comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I, I just had a concern about the thought process behind throwing out a million dollars here and a million dollars there. I know it's been changed to up to a million. But I didn't, because of the questions being asked already, I don't know, I don't know the thought process behind it. I know Commissioner Watkins has tried to explain that, but as we noted that the Biff County Board of Education is getting their own COVID funds. And I think some of these other groups, like, um, some of the others are getting funds. And I, I just wonder if we have really thought about this. I'd really prefer to have a better discussion. And, and you, and Julie is our financial expert, expert. So yes, I'd like to have her comments, just like we asked for our attorneys to comment. I'd like, she's not a commissioner, but she's someone that has information and expertise and knowledge that would help us make these decisions. I'd rather have her talk to us again because one commissioner has thrown out these, these amounts, these large amounts, and there is a possibility that we would not be reimbursed if something were put in wrong. And as if I'm not mistaken, if we are putting in some wrong information and we aren't supposed to get it, that they can withdraw any funding that they've given us already. It could, it could ruin the rest of our funding. I just, I'm just concerned about it. I'd rather have Julie, who's our financial expert, tell us a little bit more about the consequences that could happen or what needs to be done here. I'm not-
Thank you. Well, 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 hold on half a second. Let, let me go to, to, uh, our attorney, uh, Mi- Michael McNeil. He had some comments and then I'll go to you. May I pro tem? I think that was you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to the question from Commissioner Allen about the timing. Um, all four of these, uh, ordinances have a term in there that says that any money that, that is appropriated but not spent by December 31st becomes de-appropriated by operation of law. And so that's, that's set up to coincide with the timing under the CARES Act, the Federal CARES Act, that says all the funding for the Coronavirus Relief Fund has to be spent on or before December 30th. And so as soon as it hits December 31st, anything that's left in the pot under any of these four ordinances de-appropriates as matter of law.
And now, may I pro tem? I think that was you that, that were trying to make a comment. May I pro tem?
I'll yield to the sponsor.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Watkins?
So as it concerns our county and support for CARES Act, uh, as we know, we received, uh, we have the opportunity to be reimbursed and we've applied as a county for a budget. As of right now, we've done eight million dollars worth of reimbursements on costs that we've already incurred. Uh, we've, we've provided no outlets to our citizens who are business owners, um, that desire some relief that is eligible funding. We provided no relief, uh, to food, for people with food needs, which is eligible funding. And so we're highlighting things that we can do and should do that we haven't done yet. And I, and I'm very serious about these items being things that I think we all want to do as a commission. We still need to put together the, the actual administrative arm of that, but that's not our job as commissioners. It's the mayor and his staff's job. If we want to support homeless, if we want to support small businesses, this is our opportunity to say that we want to do that. Um, and that's what this is. It's not, it's not heavy on the detail because it doesn't need to be because we're not appropriating the funding. We, that's for another day. So, but. Are you?
Uh, got Commissioner Jones again and then Commissioner Winn again. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Again, the, all the intentions are good and good worthy causes and we need to help everybody as much as we can. I think we're premature and then we don't have guidelines from the state as far as these categories go.
Yes, you do.
Well, hold on, hold on. No backing for. Commissioner Jones has the floor. Commissioner Jones?
I, I don't think we have clear guidelines from the state. If we don't get reimbursed and we spend the money, then it's coming out of the general fund and then you could impact something like, uh, the pay, the pay scale increase. And I don't want to jeopardize that.
Good. Uh, Commissioner Winn, got you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. Um, I, I, again, I, I don't know, the commissioners may make this decision as a whole, but I think because one commissioner offered something like this plan with no detail at the beginning. Now the details are starting to be laid out, but at the beginning, I think I'd like to hear more detail before we actually vote this in because I don't want us to make a mistake and go forward with spending this money. Is, is there someone out there that's laughing about what I'm saying? I don't think-
No, I, I think somebody's trying, I think somebody's, I think, no, I think somebody's trying to get my attention because they want to speak next.
I hope that's what it was, but nonetheless, I think that we need to think this a little further and then put the steps out there. Commissioner Watkins is laying out some steps now that weren't in there. But I, it's just like the Board of Education, they get some funding too on their own. So why should we put another up to a million dollars? This is, these are millions and this is lots of money that you're talking about possibly spending. So I want to make sure we do it right and we don't mess it up for us on the rest of the money that we can spend for our community.
Mr. Mayor.
No, no, I, I, I've got Commissioner Lucas first, then I'll come to you, Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Lucas, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I just want us to remember that we in Macon Biff County have what roughly 155,000 residents? Is that, that's pretty close. We have a 27% poverty rate, is that right? Um, Commissioner, um, 27% poverty rate. The Meals on Wheels program has a backlog of, of elderly people who are waiting to get on the list to receive a meal every day. There are many, many foster children who fall under these different categories. There be, betwixt and between in this whole process of being placed in, in, uh, homes. I could go on and on about the different groups that would benefit. But what, uh, what I saw ordinances is that local agencies that are already falling under state and or federal guidelines would be ones eligible for, uh, providing additional services of, by, uh, receiving grants from these funds. And so, and I know that there's a time element. So I would just encourage us to go ahead. This has got to come back to us at some point with additional, uh, listings of guidelines and requirements from what I've heard today. So I think this is one step towards saying that we recognize that there are lots and lots of businesses that we could help to keep them from going under. That there are many, many folks in this community who don't have sufficient food, that there are senior citizens in this community, some of them that are related to us, who don't have what they need. A lot of this money could go to those agencies to help provide services. Now, we're fortunate, but there are so many others who are less fortunate. And with COVID, they're even farther down on their luck. So I would just encourage us to go ahead and approve these today. And then insist that the next time around, we get additional details, which I think the sponsor has said that he's gonna provide or that will have to be provided anyway. So I think that this is, it's past time for us to, uh, to want more details. I don't know how many more details you need other than all the folks that some of you complain about all the time that are homeless, that are chronically homeless. Some of this isn't, isn't them. You've got some relatives and some constituents in your districts that, uh, don't have enough food. You've got some businesses that are about to go under that could benefit from some of these small business loans. I don't know what other information you need.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Uh, Commissioner Allen, I think you were next and then Commissioner Winn again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I make a motion. We tabled this till Tuesday when we come back and let's get to, get sit down or whenever we can come back to get this thing scraped. Uh, right now, I don't think we, we know enough about what's going on. And I agree, I meant, I, I believe in what Commissioner Watkins is doing, but I don't think the commissioners know enough about what's going on themselves to, to make the judgment call that we have to make with our constituents. So I'm, you know, and I do-
Is it?
Wait, 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 before there's a second.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
We can't talk.
I'll second.
Uh, Shepherd, uh, Shepherd is the second to, to the motion to, 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 to table. That's a non-debatable motion. So all in favor of tabling this, uh, until a, a later time would vote yes. If you're opposed to tabling it and want to proceed with debate and final vote, you would vote no. Uh, I'm anticipating a, 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 a vote that's hard for me to tell by voice vote. So I'm gonna ask the clerk to call, call the roll, take a roll call vote, please, so I'll know what I'm doing. Uh, on the motion to, on the motion to table, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Tim Tillman, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Bibbins, how do you vote? Commissioners, would y'all please unmute so we can take a roll call vote?
No. No.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Slessinger, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Winn, how do you vote?
Yes, to table.
For the time.
It, it looks, it looks to me like we've got four yeses and five noes.
Yes, sir.
So the motion, the motion, the motion to table fails, uh, so we're, we're back now to discussion and the main, the main motion. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Winn, got you and then Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just to respond to some other comments and I want to respond directly to you, some of the programs mentioned like Meals on Wheels and foster care programs. I mean, those, we've talked about these being, having waiting lists for two years now. I, I don't think COVID has affected that in that great of a way. Those lit, those waiting lists have been there for two years that I've heard about since I've been here and they'll be there forever, I'm afraid. Those are two very, uh, good programs, but I don't think that the money has been thought out about how we're gonna use it, even for those two programs. But the, the other programs, the other things that now Commissioner Watkins is starting to lay out, I'd like to hear more about that. That's why I was in favor of tabling it just one week until next week because I don't want to vote for something that we probably may not get reimbursed for. As far as the homelessness, there are people, and I used this comment last time, chronic homelessness means long-term, means that you are there because you want to be there in some cases. Some people don't want to get into the society and pay bills and, and do things like the rest of us. They want to remain homeless. That's chronic. We can't help chronic if people want to stay that way.
But one, one at a time, please. Commissioner Winn has the floor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wish you would, you would, we, we could be more respectful to each other and not make comments while someone else is talking, please.
We, we, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing our best. We're doing our best.
Well, I, I just want the others to know that because if you want to keep doing that, I'll do that to them.
No.
I want to say that this, this item, more discussion for the items that we don't really know what it's for. Education, explain that to me. They already have some funds coming to them. So there's one you need to explain. Small businesses, didn't they have loans that they could apply for? And we even had local loans to some of our small businesses. A group got together and did that. So I mean, again, comments coming out, Mr. Mayor, I wish that we could just say the things we want to say without being interrupted. And I'll finish here.
Good. Uh, Commissioner Jones, got you next, sir.
Yes, sir. Again, the, the intent is sincere and the, the needs are, are worthy and I don't have a problem with that. It needs to be targeted. It needs to be specific. It needs to be more effective. And I think we'll get all of that if we have an analysis that Julie can look at it, fine tune it, come back to us and give us direction as to where the specific needs are. Again, I don't think Board of Education needs it at all. And again, the intent is worthy and sincere and I appreciate that. And I'm all for helping as many people as we can always, but it needs to be targeted. It needs to be effective. It needs to be specific. So for those reasons, I'm not in favor of voting for what we have on, on, on the table right now.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jones. I understand. Commissioner Bibbins, uh, had a comment. Commissioner Bibbins?
Yeah, I just want to mention that, uh, I am again reminded of 1955.
Yes, sir.
All right. So thank you. Thank you very much. Is there further discussion?
The lack of empathy and compassion.
I tell you.
But I, I, I yield.
Okay. Uh, uh, so got, got-
That's not true, first of all.
No, no, no further, no further discussion. Uh, all-
You must apply that rule to all of us, please.
I'm trying very hard. I'm trying very hard. Uh, so no further discussion. I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll again so we, we know what we're doing. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? If you're in favor of this, uh, uh, ordinance as amended to say up to, um, you would vote yes. If you're opposed to it, you would vote no. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Bibbins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Slessinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winn, how do you vote?
No.
Five, five, five yeses and four noes. So, so the, the ayes have it and the ordinance as amended is adopted. Uh, next is a companion, uh, ordinance, uh, th- that provides for feeding of, of the vulnerable and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Biff County Commission to authorize the Macon Biff County Government to establish a Feeding the Vulnerable CARES Act Sub- recipient Grant Fund in the amount of up to $1 million to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting local agencies that provide food for elderly, disabled and vulnerable persons in Macon Biff County that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval and Committee of the Whole made the amendment of up to. Uh, is there a further discussion? Commissioner Allen, got you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This thing keeps going back to COVID-19 and we do know that they've made some mistakes made on COVID-19. made on COVID-19. How are we going to, uh, recognize that the people that we help, this money goes to individuals with COVID-19?
We're gonna, we're gonna try to follow the rules and regulations that are promulgated by the state and by this commission.
You're telling me the commission's going to decide? Just forget it. Go ahead, do what you want to do, I don't care.
Right, right. No, no, you're right. The, it's, the rules and regulations have got to be approved by the commission before the money can be appropriated and spent. I mean, what this does is create the fund, uh, and the rules and regulations for distribution of the funds, of what the commission has yet to do, but at least this moves us in that direction. Is there, is there further discussion? Uh, hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Am I the only one? Am I the only one that's unmuted?
Y'all make it right.
Everybody's unmuted.
You know, we got a, we got a thumbs up button that we all get hit, or we just say aye, you know?
All right, all right, all right. Opposed, say no.
No.
I hit, I have, I have three nos again, uh, and, uh, so I'm going.
No.
Four, four nos, so five, five, five to four. Five, five to four, the ayes have it, and, and the, and the ordinance as amended is adopted. Uh, next, there's another companion, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, this one dealing with the school, schools, and I think, Michael, we, we amended it not just to the local Bibb Board of Education, but to charter schools, uh, uh, and private schools as well, I believe, uh, that was an amendment that was passed, and I'll ask the clerk, however, to go ahead and read this by caption.
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the Macon-Bibb County Government to establish a School Board Support Cares Act Subrecipient Grant Fund in the amount of up to $1 million to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting efforts to develop equitable remote learning capabilities to students and families in Macon-Bibb County that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Committee of the Whole recommends the amendment, again, of up to. Uh, is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I was waving first, I think.
Commissioner Lu, Commissioner Lucas, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, thank you. I need to get me a bail or, or something for you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let me remind you, um, and I was a, um, counselor in the Bibb school system. Uh, we routinely had large numbers of children who were classified as homeless, but were also students in the Bibb school system. I also have knowledge of the fact that there are a number of students who are enrolled in private schools, uh, who are on scholarship, whose families are not middle-income or wealthy, but that, a large number of those students need a lot of resources. And what the school system, the Bibb public school system does not handle, then there is a great need in this community to do some things for those other children. There's a hotel on Riverside Drive at Extended State that has large numbers of children, and some of those folks, a number of them are classified as, as homeless. And so I think that that should be enough for us to realize that this is something that we do need to support, and you don't have to believe me, you can just check with student support services and the social workers in the, uh, in the school system and in these other educational facilities. So we need to support this.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Jones, I had you next, sir.
Yes, sir. Just, just to repeat, all, all for the intent, all for the worthiness of it, we, it just needs to be targeted and specific, and if it's not, then we do a disservice to everybody involved, because it's not as effective as it could be. And that's, that's the concern. This is thrown together, and an amount is thrown out there, even though it says up to, that little tweak helps a little bit, but it's still not, it's still not target-specific, and if it is, we could be much more beneficial to our community.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is there further discussion? Uh, he, hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppo, opposed, say no.
No.
Uh, I think I've, I think I've got four nos, uh, Nguyen, Shepherd, Jones, and Allen.
Correct.
Pretty sure.
Okay, the a, the ayes have it, uh, five, five to four again, uh, and the, the ordinance as amended is adopted. Uh, next is the, the last of the, of four, uh, sub-grant, this one for a local, local small business cares act subrecipient grant fund, again amended up to $1 million, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the Macon-Bibb County Government to establish a local small business cares act subrecipient grant fund in the amount of up to $1 million to be appropriated from fund balance for the purpose of supporting local small businesses that have been adversely affected by COVID-19 and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Committee of the Whole recommends approval of the amendment of up to, uh, and, uh, is there further discussion on, on this, the local small business cares act subrecipient grant fund? He, hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, I think, I think I've got my same four, uh, nos, Commissioner Nguyen, Commissioner Shepherd, Commissioner Jones, and Commissioner Allen. Anybody in addition to that? If not, we, the ayes have it, five to four, uh, and the ordinance as amended is adopted. Uh, next, uh, we have a resol, resolution to accept, uh, some grant funds, uh, from the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Middle Georgia Regional Airport, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
Resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to ratify and authorize the mayor to execute a Georgia Department of Transportation contract to accept great cares act funding for the Middle Georgia Regional Airport in the amount of $1,63,492 with no local match and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted.
We voted the airport, but not for people. That's, that's real.
That was an extrac, that was an extraneous comment. Please, 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 please refrain from extraneous comments.
That is so refreshing.
Well, I guess we'll all start doing that then.
You've been doing that all the time.
So, you too.
Mr. Mayor.
I do in response to you. Mr. Mayor.
Is that Commissioner Jones trying to, uh, get my attention?
Yes, we still got item H up on the screen, so, uh, can we take that down?
I'm not sure. You may have frozen, it's not on my screen.
No, man.
It's on mine, but anyway, my comment is, it, it, it's, uh, that was an unneeded, unfair comment. I'm talking to you, Mr. Mayor, so.
I, I, I understand.
We all care about, we all care about all four intents and, and, and needs of the community, and I think that's unanimous. We just want it to be specific, just like, and targeted, and being analyzed, just like this one on the airport has been done. I can guarantee that amount didn't come out of the blue.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, may approach, may approach him, we, we're not, let me recognize, yeah, let me recognize you, uh, for, basically, these are points of personal privilege that I'm allowing at this point.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so, you know, I, I just hope we can get back on track, because, you know, what is really amazing, to sit and listen, and I haven't said anything, because I, I, you know, the thing is, most of federal money comes down, is for the poor and the disadvantaged. And to sit and listen to the same folks continue to say the same thing, who have, Mr. Mayor, opposed your budget for the last two to three years, have not funded any public safety, public works, and nobody that works in Macon-Bibb government, but they still, sometimes, you all show them so much respect, and they have not funded to pay for anything. And so as we continue to move forward, uh, and, and I guess this is the season of, of our last days, and it just really saddened me that it's going to come to this, that we at least try, we at least try to work, try and continue to move this community and our agendas forward, uh, that we want to see done, uh, within the next four months. And that is my goal and aim, uh, and I'm talking to you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you very much, May, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, I, I would admonish all of us to, to follow our rules and to exercise restraint, to, to speak only after you've been recognized, and to always address your comments to the chair, not have a, a kind of dialogue between, between commissioners, uh, and argument group, I just admonish all of us to do that, because I, I just remind all of us, people are watching, and people are seeing. Uh, with that, Commissioner Allen, do you have a point of personal privilege, sir?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you know, I understand where the lieutenant, lieutenant, I understand where the Mayor Pro Tim's coming from, but I've been a, a commissioner a very long time, and we all have points that we might not agree with one another. If we all agreed, we'd be lying. So it is five to four. We asked the early question on that, we hold it to next week. Four of us wants to do that, we, we stuck by that. Five did not. I take that, I'm not mad about that, other people are mad about that, but I felt, you know, I feel that be slapped at while they go with those comments, you know, let's get on with our business, I agree with it, and there probably going to be some more that, that I vote against, but that is my right to do that, and it's not the right of somebody else to tell me it's not right.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Going on, uh, uh, to the last item, uh, of, of, on the agenda, which is new business, uh, let me read, we have a number of items to be taken up, but again, this list is not exhaustive. Additional, uh, items could come down from legal during the remaining portion of the week, but again, I'm going to remind you that it has to be turned in by noon on Friday, because the holiday is on Monday, and we'll have commission meetings beginning at nine o'clock on Tuesday, September the eighth, again, by Zoom, uh, so be prepared to meet virtually, uh, September the eighth, nine o'clock, but here's the new business thus far. Item A is a resolution making the appointment of Gregory C. Glover, uh, to the Arbor Conservation Board. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item B is a resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 209 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item C is a companion, um, resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire 201 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, item D is another companion, uh, resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 183 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development. Uh, and finally, the last of those companion resolutions, resolution to approve the exercise of eminent domain, uh, to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as 195 Persley Street. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, next is item F, a resolution approving a request for the installation of six streetlights in the Lake Arrowhead subdivision pursuant to Article 10 of Chapter 29 of the Code to be paid from the facilities management budget service to government electricity line item. Uh, I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item G is a resolution, uh, approving a request for the installation of one, uh, streetlight at 400 Riverdale Road pursuant to Article 10, Chapter 29 of the Code to be paid from facilities management budget services to government electricity line item. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item H is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the sale of property, uh, to the Corporation of Mercy University totaling two one-hundredths of an acre located at 1720, uh, Danenberg Avenue for its appraised value of $800. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Uh, item I is an ordinance to authorize a supplemental budget appropriation from fund balance to the Board of Elections in the amount of $259,264 in order to provide various costs relating to the conduct of the 2020 general election. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a work authorization with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood Incorporated, that's commonly known as GMC Incorporated, in the amount of $7,700 for the purpose of hiring Taffy Pippin Consulting Incorporated as a subconsultant for the preparation of an updated disadvantaged business enterprise plan for the Macon Downtown Airport, and to accept federal funding in the amount of $6,930 and state funding in the amount of $385 toward the cost of the same with remaining costs payable from the airport budget. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a non-federal reimbursable agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $241,188.24 to be paid from the Middle Georgia Regional Airport runway 1432 rehabilitation, uh, project budget for the purpose of installing runway navigational aids. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Uh, item L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Eberhart Industries Incorporated and Mead Road Environmental, too, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $8,750,000 for the purchase of land located at 4,300 Mead Road to be paid, uh, with 2018 SPOLOST funds, Walker Road landfill purchase line item. I'm going to refer that to the Committee of the Whole. Uh, item M is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between Macon-Bibb County and Warren Associates Incorporated for the amount $509,500 for Phase Three of the Freedom Park renovation, going to be paid from 2018 SPOLOST bond proceeds. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. That is all of the new business that has come down to date, but again, please double-check your agendas, uh, that'll come out on Friday afternoon before we leave for the long weekend, and we'll know what's coming up on the committee meetings.
Oh, the locomotive did make it?
Sir?
The locomotive?
The locomotive did not make it, but, uh, you know, i, i, if it comes down during, during the week, and I, I think they're working on that, uh, we can certainly add, add it to the, to the agenda, uh, next Tuesday, next Tuesday. Uh, is, is, is there any other point of personal privilege that I, I see, Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to comment, because of some things that happened at our meeting, Mr. Mayor, I want to say this directly to you, that, uh, you know, being attacked, first of all, people that know me, and there's a lot of people that know me, and this group doesn't really know me that well, even after two and a half years, no one's ever tried to get to know me, but I think that I'm a fiscal conservative, and when it comes to spending money for our community and within our community and our citizens' taxpayer dollars, I look at it very closely, I'm very serious about that, and will always be, and may, and that may mean I disagree with you on some things you want to spend. I'm not a spend, spend, spend kind of person. I think that when we spend something, it needs to be planned and decided, uh, with detail of how we're going to do it and where we're going to do it. But I don't appreciate the personal attack made as a public safety chairman, that we aren't spending any money, we aren't having any resolutions. You know what, guys? If I had the money to spend, there's things we could do for this public safety. The number one thing would be hire 100 new officers, but you, you haven't given us, you haven't given, the commission hasn't given that kind of money. So as public safety chairman, and I said this to a reporter yesterday, it's not up to me as an individual, or even up to my committee of five, to make this community better as far as the crime that's there, it's up to the community to do that. It takes a community to fight crime, and I, I don't like being attacked that we haven't done anything, and I think that same attack was made at the prior public safety chairman. Just. Just be careful of what you say to people because you don't know what's behind it. And by the way, if you have a better thing, if you want something to be in a resolution and you have it, give it to me. I'll be happy to do it. But we need money, and that's what's behind all of this as far as our crime and our public safety in this community.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Are there any other, we've reached the end of our agenda. Are there any other points of public, uh, uh, personal privilege that, that a commissioner wants? Hearing none?
Labor Day.
Happy, thank you, Commissioner Lucas. That's a wonderful note on which to end this meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.